Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody who's with us this evening, although we have some, a lot of personnel matters to take up this evening, which is exciting, new personnel and promotions we've got to deal with. And there's another exciting thing going on in this town, is a little basketball tournament that we're gonna start tomorrow at Rupp Arena. And we have some representatives here from Bethlehem High School. And I'd like to ask Principal Hamilton and Athletic Director Graham, if they'd stand and come forward. Councilman Betty Hart has sponsored a proclamation, so I'd like to ask for a recommendation or a motion to approve this proclamation naming tomorrow Bethlehem Banshee Day. So, Councilman Hart, would you like to make that?
Some move.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, the Councilman Hibs. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, if y'all come forward, I'll read this and like to present it to you. Earlier today, Mr. Hamilton invited me to talk to the team, and I kind of aged us a little bit when I told the girls that when Mr. Hamilton and I were in high school, we got a taste of this with Bardstown, 1st and 5th Region twice. I said, of course, that was before Bethlehem even allowed boys to go to high school. It takes us a little bit. Anyway, this is the proclamation that Councilman Hart has sponsored. So, whereas the 2018-2019 Bethlehem High School girls' basketball team has won 11 straight games off the pile of a record of 29 wins and four losses, and whereas the Bethlehem Banshees played outstanding defense on March 5th, 2019, in the 5th Region Championship game against the Elizabeth Town Lady Panthers, limiting them to 31% shooting night, an out rebound in the Panthers' 37-18. And whereas Bethlehem defeated Elizabeth Town to capture the 5th Region Championship trophy by a score of 63-47. And whereas the Banshees showed exemplary character and commitment in representing their school with pride during their season-long quest for state tournament bid, their first ever in the 200-year history of Bethlehem. And whereas Bethlehem will play 3rd Region Champion Owensboro Catholic in the first round of the state tournament on March 13th at Rupp Arena. And whereas Bethlehem alumni and citizens of Bardstown alike wish to express their heartfelt congratulations and support for the Bethlehem Banshees basketball team as they continue their pursuit of a championship in the Kentucky High School Sweet 16 State Tournament. Now therefore, I, Jay Richard Heaton, Mayor of the City of Bardstown, do hereby proclaim March 13th to be Bethlehem Banshee Day in the City of Bardstown. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Can I say a few words to the?
Well, I just want to say thanks to everybody. You know, this has been a tremendous, thank you. This has been a tremendous run. And we've really enjoyed the support from the entire community. Everybody's kind of got behind us, and these girls are, they're a great bunch of girls to be behind. And they're having fun, and they're good players, and so we're looking forward to tomorrow. And we want to thank everybody for thinking about us and proclaiming tomorrow being Bethlehem Banshee Day.
Well, we want to thank all our first responders, some of the group that I did participate in, the escort out of town this afternoon for the Banshee basketball team.
We had a great send-off. I was, I could, you know, it was amazing with the people supporting and things, so we thank everybody.
Thank you, Tom. Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right. Still got some exciting things ahead of us this evening. I'm gonna call Chief Pressing to introduce our newest police officer that we'll be swearing in this evening.
I'd like to introduce Kevin Murphy. Kevin graduated from the University of Louisville with a bachelor's degree in sports administration. Kevin was there on a scholarship, he was a scholarship football player, and I have to brag on him because he was on the '90 Fiesta Championship team, then the '93 Liberty Boat Championship team, so I think that's a pretty big accomplishment there. And right now, he has a son that is playing over in Europe on a club football team. He's a quarterback, and he has two other children that are in high school right now. So, just a little bit about Kevin. Kevin is 21 years in law enforcement, has experience in patrol. He was a SWAT member. He was on the SRT team, which is a special response team. He was on an ESU team, which is a joint services emergency team, which basically is a hazmat team that deals with weapons of mass destruction. He was in the community policing unit. He was a division resource officer. He was a school resource officer. He was a flex detective, which deals with street-level narcotics and street crimes. And he was also a bike officer and ATV officer. So, we're really excited to bring all that experience here to Bardstown, and we're excited about Kevin joining the Bardstown Police Department. So, welcome Kevin.
Kevin, if you'd join me up here, I'll swear in.
He can take three minutes position.
You better not try to run from him. If he raises his right hand and, "I swear in here, Officer Murphy." I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of police officer according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I being a citizen of this state, did not fall into duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge by the use of deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying the challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus affiliated so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to thank, thank you for the opportunity to become a part of the City of Bardstown and the Police Department. I'm a big community policing proponent. I think a lot of things couldn't be better worked with when you're able to talk to people and just have a better police-community relationship. As I worked in my last six years on the Police Department of Louisville Metro, was a district resource officer, so a lot of, I attended a lot of meetings like this, gave a lot of crime report presentations, and just found different ways to help for the group to prevent crime. So, yeah, appreciate your opportunity, and I'm glad to be here. I'm from a town similar to this, I'm from Kelso, Kentucky, if anybody knows where that is. And so, I enjoy working in the City of Louisville and for a big department, but I've always wanted to come back and work for a smaller department, a little smaller city, just to, and the history of your city is similar to the history of where I'm from, so, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. And thank you, Chief. Okay, we have Chief Bill Mannely next. Some of our firefighters were a little busy last Tuesday working on incidents, so leaving it at that. And Chief Mannely got some promotions on the floor of our firefighters this evening that we weren't able to do last season, we're gonna complete that this evening. Chief?
Thank you, and I apologize for last week, but these gentlemen were, like the mayor said, tied up at the scene last week. These aren't new hires, they're people that have been around for a while, but we went through the promotion process, as we're probably at the two stations, and we're just moving forward. So, moving from lieutenant to captain is Mike Capfield.
Come on in.
Also, also moving from lieutenant to captain is Justin Brown.
Thank you, you're welcome.
A new officer for us, Corey Lanham, Corey being lieutenant. And another new lieutenant for is Brian Taylor.
We decided we're gonna do this all together rather than do it four different times.
We like it.
How difficult it keeps talking about those fighting against weapons. Anyway, I'll do the honor and swear you all in as captains and lieutenants, if you raise your right hand. Corey Lanham, Brian Taylor, who will be moving to lieutenant, and Mike Capfield and Justin Brown will be moving to the position of captain. So, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of captain and lieutenant of the Bardstown Fire Department according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I being a citizen of this state, did not fall into duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge by the use of deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus affiliated so help me God.
I do.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
No.
Well, we're just very happy to thank you to be with us tonight, and you know, fortunate in this community to have firefighters and police officers like these gentlemen, who had been seen with, especially last Tuesday with the incident at the local distillery, it was a major incident, so. But then, so happy to get that, those promotions this evening, have those veteran firefighters moved up to captain and lieutenant. I know we've got a couple here who, I'm gonna call on you, even though many of your scouts are not with you, like you may be.
I think they're outside.
I think they're outside.
Are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to?
Two of my little first scouts.
Yeah.
They're big scouts.
They called a while back, and I just said, hey, come.
Jerry, you still a new one?
I'm just calling.
Would you like to, I know you're the scout master, would you like to introduce yourself and your troop number and what's your reasons for being with us this evening?
All right, I'm Scout Master Bob Bruno. I've been with troop 142, this is my 24th year in scouting, so. And we have one missing, I don't know where he's at, but he needs a council meeting to finish his Eagle. So, he needs a few more requirements, and this is one of them, but getting him here is something different.
He'll be welcome whenever he can.
You know, they're 17-years-old, you know, it's like.
Three times a month.
No control at all, but we appreciate it.
Who's this scout with us this evening?
Mr. Jerry Creager, Zach Brown, he's already an Eagle, so he's waiting on the other one to become Eagle, so they can do it at the same time.
Congratulations, Zach, and thank you for taking the time to join us this evening.
Thank you.
Next time we have a meeting, bring him with you.
Yeah.
Go and get him.
That's the coach and schoolteacher coming up. Well, he's gotta get things done. Thank you, I hope you enjoyed the meeting. You missed a little bit of excitement or group chat on the things that shouldn't be of interest. Don't see anybody else out in the public, so Jessica, would you call on you to talk about the water treatment plant filter unit bid?
Yes, this project was, is in the budget for this fiscal year, and it is maintenance of filter unit number one. We actually performed this exact same maintenance on filter unit number two last year, and it's not something that you can take out and have those out of service, you know, at the same time. So, we've been kind of phasing this maintenance work. This, we only had one bidder, CNS Quality Services LLC, and they were actually the awarded bidder for our previous unit, so they are familiar with the plant, they're very familiar with the work, since they did the other unit that's exactly the same size. Their bid came in at $86,700. The overall budget in, that I had allocated for this project was $100,000. There's another portion to this that's gonna be done by another contractor to fix the underdrain itself, and the overall budget will be a little bit over that $100,000, but I have some additional maintenance monies that are not gonna be all utilized, so the overall water budget will not be affected with regard to that. So, I would ask that the council please approve the recommended bidder of CNS Quality Services if you would tonight, so we can move forward with our, with our maintenance.
Okay. We'll begin the discussion, there's any other questions? Jessica, with first, we need a motion then to approve the bid per the recommendation of our engineering department for CNS Quality Services LLC for the water treatment plant filter unit repair, cleaning, and painting for $86,700.
Some move, Mayor.
A motion by Councilman Williams to have a second. I'll say second with Councilman Butler. Is there any discussion? Any other questions of Jessica on this? If not, then all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
There were a number of items that were added the very last minute today, so if you're looking at your agenda, and you don't see next to the Rowan Creek wastewater system improvements, there should be a recommendation letter by HDR. If you see that, then you should have all the last-minute documents. If you don't have that, you can back up and hit refresh, and I have hard copies here as well, so just want to make sure you have all the changes we did to the last couple minutes tonight. Okay, thank you.
And then we have representatives of HDR with us tonight to answer questions. So, Jessica, would you all like to walk us through the recommendation for these two contracts?
Yes, we have the bid opening on Thursday, and as you can see from the bid tabs, we did have very good participation in the, in the bid, so we were very happy with the amount of qualified and quality contractors that came out and actually submitted pricing. The Potter Shop bid, contract number two, we ended up with several bidders, and the recommended low bidder was, I should say, Scott &amp; Ritter Construction or Contracting. And then on contract one, Smith Contractors is the recommended low bidder for the work at the Town Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. The overall budget for the project, engineer's estimate was right around $2.3 million. Both of these contracts together came in just over $2.9, so it was an increase over what we had anticipated, but I think that could be due to a couple of factors. When the estimate was put together, you know, that estimate was done probably close to two years ago, and with escalators in place based on inflation and just assumed increases. But what we're finding across the board is that labor expenses, as well as material prices, have really gone up quite a bit in the last year to six months. Potter Shop Pump Station, the one at the plant actually came in right at budget, what we anticipated, is the Potter Shop Pump Station work that came in half. So, you're thinking that that could be contributed to the fact that it's a very tight working space, and there is rock anticipated. So, trying to do that rock excavation while you keep everything in service and doing pump around, you know, because the waste stream is still gonna be coming in, you still have to work around those conditions. And there's a house really nearby, so it's just really tight conditions that I think is making that more challenging, and they've added money to compensate for that. Not to mention it is an SRS project, so Davis Bacon and American Steel, all of those things are required for, for the project. I guess that's all the real comments that I have. Rich, do you have anything that you want to add to?
Yeah, my name's Rich Smith with HDR Engineering, so I provided the recommendation letter, and Jessica pretty much hit the highlights of it. The two low bids are about 26% over the estimate, the combination of the two, but as she said, there are a number of factors, especially at Potter Shop with the rock on the site, just the confined area to work in, so it's gonna be difficult for the contractor. Also, the bypass pumping that'll have to be done during construction. And then the, some of the KIA factors add some cost to with Davis Bacon and also American Iron and Steel requirement, so. Just, you know, pretty much repeating what Jessica said, that we did get good, good bid participation and good contractors, so we feel good about going forward with the project.
I did have other questions, other questions for Jessica or Richard?
Just, just one, and I guess it could be both for Richard or Jessica. Since rock anticipation is what seems to be raising this bid number up significantly, is that something if we don't hit rock, that there could potentially be a deduct? Or is that just, is that anticipation of rock because you know that it's there, or that you think that it's going to be there?
Well, we did it boring at the compensation site, at the largest structure, and we had rock at like two feet.
Okay, so you know it's.
It's pretty definitive that it's not in anticipation. It's gonna be there, and the only question is how difficult it will be to remove it, but it's definitely there.
Okay.
Jessica, I've got a question, because I'm not the, that for me with the reading this bids, like you said on contract number two, where it's Scott &amp; Ritter, they, why are some of these have a combined bid? Is that for, for contracts, both the contracts together, and then you got Scott &amp; Ritter, they were the low bid on one, but they didn't bid on the other, it looks like?
That's correct. We offered as an option for the contractors to submit a price for both bids together, thinking that there could be some benefit to the city if one, if we awarded to one single contractor, and that's where you see that option. But some of the contractors elected not to provide a bid for the wastewater treatment plant work. So, we ended up, it just happened to work out that we ended up with two separate bidders, and one of the low bidders didn't bid on the other project, so.
So, some of this work, of course, I think you plan on it starting in this, preparing the city, in this budget year, so will that allow us to take care of the overage, perhaps in the next year's budget due to the carryover process that part of this is gonna have?
Yes, and we currently have monies allocated within this fiscal budget for all of the three contracts together, knowing that, not knowing at the time, this time in the year, which you're gonna be able to get done 18 months from now, how fast the permitting processes go, the easement acquisition, and the whole, the whole ball of laps. So, we do have money in this, in this budget, and we are in the process of executing and getting the KIA monies that we've been allocated, which will more than cover these two contracts. So, it's just going to be moving forward with contract three, that we're going to be looking at trying to either go back for additional expansion on our current loan, you know, and ask for an increase based on whatever contract three comes in at. With these prices, anticipating that contract three may very well be higher than the estimate, just because there are several very large bores, and it's a really long linear line, so still not sure how that's gonna come out, but there is that opportunity for us to go back to KIA, once we get to contract three and have a bid and know what that comes in at, to ask for an extension. We, I think Rich already reached out to the folks at KIA, and they didn't seem to think that would be a, a big issue. Or we could go back and discuss with Tracy and our financials to see if we wanted to self-fund that other, that discrepancy based on how that works out.
Is it the 1.6 federal grant part of this overall project?
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, we weren't guaranteed that going in.
No.
We, we decided to go forward with the project, do the engineering, hit the estimates, not knowing whether we'd be getting 1.6 million, so really, in the overall scheme of things, you know, we're still in better shape than we might have been, but the project has to be done.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, that is some, some help to mitigate the overage that we're looking at right now, so. It's no fun to have to face these kind of cost overruns that we weren't anticipating, but you know, this project's been on the books for a while, it's taken till now to get a bid and so forth, so.
Right.
And estimates is, you know, it's tricky, it doesn't always hit exactly where they should be, so.
Right, you never, some, I think escalates in material costs, you can get pricing and add, you know, escalating factors to them, but that doesn't necessarily mean the market's gonna keep, you know, match those. Every now and then you get, there's been, probably 10 years ago, we had the other issue that there was not a lot of work available, and contractors, a lot of bids came in underestimated because there just wasn't as much work, and folks were trying to keep people in jobs, and the contractors weren't as busy. But now I think there's just this economic zoom throughout the state, perhaps, that's kind of driving up some of that supply and demand.
I think construction's seeing that all over, as in other industries. Is there any questions before we get into asking for a motion? So, Jessica, the scoutmaster of the Town Creek improvements, is that just a large, is it larger, is that the reason, is that what we're doing? Go ahead.
We're actually adding some improvements at the headfirst, some additional screening equipment. Remember we, earlier in the year, or maybe at the end of last year, we had, we talked about the issue with wipes and debris that were hanging up and causing a lot of maintenance issues. So, we were changing out some screening that should really help with that problem. And as well as the growth that we're having in the Rowan Creek Wayshed, it all gets pumped to the Town Creek Pump Station, so that's additional flow. And we're, because the plant was designed with 24-inch through pipes throughout the plant, we, but yet the inlet has now been upgraded to a 36-inch pipe. So, we're needing to take that capacity through the plant to make that larger, to expand the capacity just to transport. We're not changing the ability of how much we're able to treat, though we're changing the amount, how much we're able to transport back to the pump station that also pumps flow to the other plant where we do have available capacity. So, I'm just trying to move the flow from all the additional growth through the plant to be able to transport it to the other facility for treatment. So, some of it will get treated at the Town Creek plant, but this project doesn't expand our treatment capacity as, as a whole, just allows us to continue to transport without overflows, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and this is probably because the east end's kind of grown a lot?
Right, the east end has continued to grow, and because we have a lot of infrastructure already available at the plant in those lagoons, and you still get some treatment, and we have a very large pump station at the rear of that facility, to kind of what it can't process, we can send down to the other plant. So, because that's already in place with the, that was put in when the Lower Beach Wharf, it's now the Jerry Riley plant, was constructed, you know, there's a 24-inch horse main that transports flow to the Jerry Riley plant from about midway between our plant and the Withrow Creek Wayshed. So, this just allows us to help utilize that infrastructure without pumping all the way from the whole east side directly to the Lower Beach Wharf plant. We're able to utilize, under lower flow conditions, you know, that treatment we do get there, and maximize at the most, even though this may not seem like it economically, but it's really a more economic way to treat and transport at this point.
Got all of it too?
Just trying to narrow it down.
Then if we could, then I would ask for a motion to approve the recommendation from the project manager, HDR Engineering, and also our city engineer to approve the two bids, contract number one to Smith Contractors for $1,334,000, and the contract number two to Scott &amp; Ritter Incorporated for $1,566,847. Subtle, Mayor. A motion by Councilman Knows, and a second?
Second.
Second with Councilman Shekels. Any discussion? Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. And I think we have a couple of other guests who've just joined us.
He found him. It's all them police officers going out here.
Here it is, hopefully our next eagle, Scott of Bardstown and Nelson County possibly.
Yeah. Kevin Seawater, he is almost there to eagle.
And this is Pat Brown, my scout master.
That's his dad. We're making eagles anyway.
Okay. I don't have any correspondence and no CNOAs tonight, so you got, you got, you got some work coming up. Have everybody had a chance to review the minutes of our Mark Smith working session? And if so, if there's no correction or additions, we'll approve that by unanimous consent? Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to call on Audrey Hayden, our city attorney, to talk about we're amending an annexation ordinance and we've got an update on a legal description. So Audrey, do you have an ordinance number 809 and 813?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So back many years ago when I was a wee puff, one frog lawyer, you all annexed this land back in 2004. Ordinance 809 was the ordinance that I guess announced the intent to annex this area. And then, of course, it was published in the paper and all that. And then 813 is the ordinance where we actually annexed this particular area. Of course, that was now 15 years ago and I don't want to steal Jessica's thunder, but from what I understand, we're using a little bit more modern ways of mapping things. And it came to our attention when we started looking at annexing some adjacent areas that the legal description recorded in the ordinance did not quite exactly match what the intention was. And now we have had it re-surveyed, I think, and have been able to create a, well, the surveyor created an updated legal description. So just to be clear, we are not adding any co-terees. This is just to sort of clarify for the Secretary of State's Land Office exactly what those coordinates are. I prepared a summary of that so that I hope you don't have to read the entirety. But for the councilman, when you look at the entire legal description, of course, you have a copy of the plat there as well. And there's nothing different about this area, as you'll see, there are some, you know, very slight changes, I think. Are they in the ordinance, Mayor, are they reflected or do we? Yes, there's some very slight changes, you know, by half a, you know, there's one that's like half a foot that's just a little bit different to kind of clean that up a little bit. So I don't know if Jessica wants to speak to that a little more.
I think Audrey did a great job of explaining that.
Jessica, her first annexation.
Absolutely.
We'll be ready for the next one.
Anything else? Is there some correlation though because of the state mapping that?
Correct. Because the state mapping office has their own shake files that they create based on all of the older annexations that they receive. Again, just when you go on the website, there were some things that we noticed that didn't quite reflect what our mapping had in our plat, our annexation plats. And so when digging and investigating, we kind of figured out where those cleanups needed, those little minor tweaks to reflect what the annexation plat that was already adopted years and years ago, the intent of the property. And we kind of really noticed it as we started trying to match up those annexations that have come subsequently that border those areas, it really started not fitting. It was kind of like trying to force a puzzle when it just didn't fit, even though it was supposed to and intended to. So this was really just cleanup housekeeping to make sure that as we move forward, A, what's already at the state office matches properly and those, the map reflects what is intended by the ordinances. And as we annex those areas that are growing and already have, you know, annexation agreements and services and developments already occurring, that as we move forward with those, everything will fall in and can be done much, you know, timely as, you know, as we go rather than sitting on a big bench.
Anything else? Okay, then I would ask for a motion then to approve the ordinance number B 2019, amend the annexation ordinances of 809 and 813.
Do I need to read the summary?
And ask for the city attorney to read the summary.
Okay. And thankfully I don't have to read the whole legal description.
Well, we got, I need a motion.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Doz, second by Councilman Williams. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Audrey, if you would read the summary.
Okay. Ordinance number B 2019, amend annexation ordinances 809 and 813. An ordinance amending the legal description and plat in the ordinances annexing into the city of Bardstown land located on the west side of Bluegrass Parkway, north side of US Highway 150, on the east and west side of Kentucky Highway 245, and on the east and west side of Philly at True Lane near Bardstown and Nelson County. Whereas the city of Bardstown has enacted, enacted numerous ordinances annexing property into the corporate limits of the city of Bardstown. And whereas the city of Bardstown wishes to provide a modern, accurate, easily identifiable legal description reflecting bearings and coordinates based upon the state plane coordinate system, including relevant GPS and GIS data, same having been certified by a professional land surveyor for the prior annexation adopted in ordinances 809 and 813. And whereas the city wishes to comply with the requirements of amended KRS 81A subsection 470 effective July 12, 2004. And whereas the city intends to amend ordinances number 809 and 813 to correct the defined boundaries of the territory previously annexed and adopt a modern and accurate legal description of territory previously annexed. And whereas this ordinance clarifies and corrects the written legal description and plat in ordinances number 809 and 813 for the previously annexed territory. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Bardstown. Number one, that the city council of Bardstown hereby adopts the following legal description for a certain tract of land located on the west side of Bluegrass Parkway, north side of US Highway 150, on the east and west side of Kentucky Highway 245, and on the east and west side of Philly at True Lane in Nelson County, Kentucky, by new plat as an accurate depiction of the property previously annexed into the corporate city limits of Bardstown by ordinance 813 adopted October 1, 2004. And hereby adopts said new legal description and plat as the official legal description and plat to be adopted by the city for all purposes when referencing this prior annexation. Number two, the new legal description as prepared by Jeffrey W. Wolf, professional land surveyor, is as follows. Certain tract of land located on the west side of Bluegrass Parkway, north side of US Highway 150, on the east and west side of Kentucky Highway 245, and on the east and west side of Philly at True Lane in Nelson County, Kentucky. And more particularly described in a corrected meets and bounds description that conforms to the corrected plat and corrected legal description attached to your two. Number three, the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable and if any section, phase, or provision shall for any reason be declared invalid, such declaration of invalidity shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Number four, ordinance numbers 809 and 813 shall reflect the corrected legal description as set forth above and attached to this ordinance as exhibit A and the corrected plat as attached to this ordinance as exhibit B. Number five, this ordinance is adopted pursuant to KRS Chapter 81A and said ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon the signature, recordation, and publication in accordance with KRS Chapter 81A and KRS Chapter 424, City of Bardstown, Richard, J. Richard Heaton, Mayor, Mary Riley, City Clerk. The summary was certified by Audrey L. Hayden, City Attorney. A copy of the complete ordinance is available for introduction in the office of the City Clerk at 220 North Street, Bardstown, Kentucky.
I think I need to back up. I think I asked for a vote before you read this.
I didn't want to, I'm going to eat her something.
Yeah, we asked for an introduction and then, then we'll vote since she's read it. So can I ask for an introduction of this? B 2019, amend annexation ordinance 809 and 813.
Yes, Mayor, I'll ask to introduce ordinance number B 2019, amending annexation ordinances 809 and 813.
Okay. Now we've had it introduced and we've had the reading, then I'd ask for a motion then to approve the ordinance part of the summary that's been read by Audrey.
I'll make the motion to approve that ordinance.
Can we have a motion and have a second?
I'll second it. As long as she doesn't have to read it.
So a motion and a second. Any other discussions? My apologies for getting a post before the cart there for a second. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Opposed? Just to follow up on that, what Audrey and Jessica were referring to, there's a really large tract that basically joins this property on the natural lane that already has an annexation agreement in effect for about 150 something townhomes that we'll be acting on in the near future. So that's what has triggered this. And so it's such a large tract, and so we'll probably call a annexation committee meeting prior to that to go over that because there's a couple of adjoining properties that we need to look at. If we don't address that, we could inadvertently, or not inadvertently, physically create an island surrounded, a county property as an island surrounded by city property, which you're not supposed to do, to have 500 acres and then have a three-acre tract in the center of that. Still, still lying in the county, so we'll have to clean that up. So it's, so small tracts of land that have joined that very large tract that we'll be bringing in. We have a meeting where we get all that together. So, okay. Thank you all. Any reports from the staff or committees? Have you cut it up any of the meetings or anything? Okay, then I would call on our HRB, head of HRB, Rashay Jennings, to talk about some new appointments for HRB.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two excellent candidates, basically Ms. Summer Aguilera and then Bruce Rogers, both of Beazik Construction. And so these candidates are amazing individuals with a lot of background and experience that are going to be great assets to the HRB board, as many of you do know. Summer comes to us with an associate of science in architectural technology, bachelor of science in construction management. And then Mr. Bruce Rogers comes to us also with a founding knowledge of many of the construction projects and the products that are offered to us through the Beazik Construction Company and as well as to the Historic District as a whole. So there's a lot of great assets, a lot of wonderful qualities in both of these, and I'm really excited about them joining my board.
Well, I think Susan Harding House works for Beazik Construction and Bruce Rogers works for Beazik.
Lover.
River and Home Center. So they're not both in the same company, owned by different, different groups of the same family.
Yeah.
So they're not, they work together. I would just add that both Ms. Keen and Ms. Evans approached me here a while back and indicated that they were going to be stepping down. Mary Keen had been talking about moving to Louisville for a number of years, or not a number of years, but for some time. I think Greg's aware of that. And, and so the time has come, I think she, has she moved yet?
No, you didn't.
So she's going to be moving to Louisville, so she couldn't really serve on the committee any longer. And then Ms. Evans approached me, so you know that she's had some changes in her personal life in the last year and she's doing a lot more traveling, but she's still very much a part of the community and other organizations like the Stephen Foster Drama and so forth, which prevent her from attending the meetings on a regular basis. So she felt it was time that she should step down. She couldn't participate like she wanted to, she wanted to step down. So Rashay did a great job on kind of looking over the community on people that might be willing to serve and then also have good qualifications. I think both of these people bring some great qualifications for this job.
Absolutely. I'm pretty excited for them.
This makes, makes us, we have a full complement of our board that, you know, we don't have problems with getting a court, court, court. And so forth. So I ask for a motion then to approve the historic review board appointments per Rashay's recommendation. So a motion by Councilman Hart and a second by Councilman Buckman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? City council members' comments?
You've got to see, maybe the discouraging 14 at 5 o'clock at the mayor's conference room.
Okay. Any other council members have anything, Betty?
I have just a couple of things. Mayor Krasik and I met with the people from PATH and United for Recovery last week and it was a very, very good informative meeting. Those two organizations are doing wonderful things that I wasn't aware of. And then we attended the public meeting that United for Recovery had after that, and that was an eye-opening experience as well. So I haven't had a chance to get with Chief Krasik to see where we, what we do to move forward. But a lot of the things that I had in mind that I wanted the coalition to do, those two organizations are doing them already. So it's just a matter of bringing those all to the table and figuring out who's doing what so that we're not duplicating efforts. And then the other thing, you all probably saw this on Facebook, but there's a group that's called Henrytown Pride Gang. And I think they just deserve some public recognition of what they're doing up in Henrytown. Their goal is to become the garden district of Bardstown. And they have a plan in place and have brought 22 families to the table to work together to plant flowers and clean up their homes. They're going door to door, handing out seedlings for herbs and things to really beautify their homes up there. And they also told me that the gazebo apartments have been sold and the new owners have repainted, made repairs, putting up gutters. So there's really a big beautification effort up in that end of town, and I think that's wonderful and I applaud them for their efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Any other council members have anything this evening?
Do you want to say anything about Dixie on Thursday or April?
Um, no, I would love to actually, if that's okay. Um, we have my first restoration workshop series for the year. Ms. Dixie Hibbs will be presenting this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Coback Building, Center of Bardstown Education Complex at 219 East Mear Avenue. It's free and open to the public. She's going to talk about if this house could talk, how to research your historic home or historic property, talking about deed research and all the things that you can do. So there'll be pizza and drinks provided, desserts, veggie trays, lots of food, lots of friends, lots of great times. So, and of course, Ms. Dixie Hibbs, we can't beat that. So if everyone, it's free and open to everyone, please come out and attend.
She's going to be upstairs?
Yes, second floor at the, take the rear entrance at the rear of the building for the Bread for Life Food Pantry. Come up the elevator to second floor and right at the end of that hallway where the workshop will be located, there'll be signs directing you and I'll be there as well. But please join us. Thank you, Joe.
You can see how much, sometimes you see where people pay the cow or two donkeys for a property. It's really interesting when you go out and get a lot of them. Very interesting.
Thank you, Joe.
We haven't taken any livestock in on you.
A piece I have, there was livestock traded for it in 1842, I believe. And the irony of the whole thing was the person that bought that property's name was Joseph Buckman. Isn't that crazy? That's some interesting things you can find out. Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Rashay. Thank you, Councilman Buckman. We don't have any cemetery deeds. I'll just make an announcement, I think the media may have gotten this already, but I'll go, I'm going to read part of this. Barstown has been recognized and received another economic accolade that we should be proud of. This one comes from the National Foundation that analyzes economic performance across the U.S. The Walton Family Foundation just released its list of the most dynamic micropolitans in the United States. And Bardstown ranked 31st out of 531 micros across the country. Bardstown is the only micro in Kentucky to rank in the top 100, with Mount Sterling next at number 162. So just a little background, micropolitans areas comprised of localities with a population between 10 and 50,000. Each micropolitane area is ranked and reviewed on performance-based metrics such as job growth, income gains, in proportion to total jobs at young firms. This is the first time that such research has been undertaken on both scale and scope. And the study is an attempt to bridge a gap in identifying which communities are thriving and which are struggling to provide economic opportunities for their residents. And the Walton Family Foundation is family-led foundation comprised of the children and grandchildren of Walmart founder Sam and Helen Walton, that understands the importance of small towns and their economic performance. So this is really great to think that Barstown is ranked so high out of 531 other communities like our size in the whole country. This follows up, I think, a year or so ago, where we recognized the top 10% of those size communities. communities for economic data that was gathered in 2016 and 2017. That was when we had attracted 500 million in new investment and expansion during 2016 and 2017. So we continue to be recognized and we're grateful for that, but mainly grateful for the confidence that people have in Barstown and our community and all the positive things that attract new business and expansion. And so I think it's really the result of a very collaborative effort on the part of both public and private efforts to have everything in place that makes us a place that people want to invest and they have confidence they can invest and they get a great return on their investments. So we're blessed. It brings challenges, it's like what Jessica's talking about this evening, if August wasn't going on, you know, we wouldn't be sanding and reworking our infrastructure, but it's a problem I think that any other cities in the state and the nation would love to have cities our size. So the impact will have a positive impact on us, and I think we will handle our part of the job. We have a lot of people dedicated to this, and Kim Houston and her group have a lot to be commended for. And then people don't realize, we make a really, really strong effort on maintaining and helping those plants that are here right now. Everybody talks, likes all these ribbon cuttings and all that, but there's, many of you know there's a lot of expansion going on here. And again, those companies, most of those companies have other plants and locations where they could decide to invest their money, but we're fortunate they're deciding to expand here. And that's a competition in itself. You know, some of these plants, there's one here, you know, they have other plants around the country, so this plant manager here is competing against his other plant managers in other states to see who's going to get that, do the best. And I think we're doing, doing okay in that regard. So this is great news, and we got a press release from Kim Houston's office this week, so I'm proud of that. And want to thank the council and the city staff and everybody that helps make this stuff happen, so it's good news. And one last thing, we have a couple of gentlemen here with us that are here with us, about every meeting, and they don't, we don't get to talk about them very often, but I'm going to talk about them a little bit tonight. Mr. Jim Brooks and Randy Patrick were honored recently by the DAR Coxas Station Chapter, and they both received a media award, and I think they had some fun with the award and talking that they weren't twin brothers or weren't brothers, even though they were accused of it, I think. People don't know how best they just know their first names, but congratulations to you two on your awards. And thank you for the work you do in our community and thanks for taking the time to be at all these meetings, not only here, but throughout the community and letting the community understand what's happening in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion before adjournment. So move, motion by Councilman. Councilman Shekels, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.